Call for order of the Manistee City Council Meeting, Tuesday, September 15, 2015. All rise of the public legion?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Cody?
Here.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Here.
Councilmember?
Here.
Mayor Fortham Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Here.
Councilmember Gustad?
Here.
Interim city manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
DPW director?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
Public safety director?
Here.
And city engineer?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like to make two changes to the agenda. One is to remove 8(c) the DDA bylaw amendments. That will come back to you at a later date. And number two is request a motion to add item 8(g), which has to do with city manager recruitment. The second takes a motion.
Have a motion for amendment?
I'll make a motion to amend and add item 8(g) allowing action by council to amend the item.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Goodspeed, second by Councilman Cody. Any discussion?
Roll call please.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Fortham Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. Are there any citizens that wish to speak on the agenda-related items? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Carol Pascal, 6th and Sprou Street. This comment is about item, first item, consideration of ordinance prohibiting the feeding of wild mammals, which I believe would be squirrels partly. I guess I never thought we would be having an ordinance that said you can't feed squirrels. I feed birds and squirrels come to my feeders pretty regularly and I wondered how are you policing it? What is the penalty? What happens to people who feed squirrels? So, Councilmember?
Are there any other comments? Consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city managers to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during a regular course of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, approval of payroll, monthly bills, notification regarding the next work session, consideration of the Manistee Catholic Central Homecoming Parade, consideration of the first annual run for recovery, 5K run, walk for Stonehouse Recovery.
I'll make the motion if council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Cody, second by Councilman Woodliffe. Is there any discussion?
Roll call please.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Fortham Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Yes.
And Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Unfinished business, none? New business? Consideration of Ordinance 15-10 to prohibit the feeding of deer, wild turkeys, and other wild mammals. At the regular, at their meeting of July 23, 2015, the Ad hoc Deer Herd Committee requested that city attorney draft ordinance language to ban the feeding of deer. City Attorney George Saylor drafted language to amend Chapter 606 of the codified ordinances of Manistee to include a section 606.08, feeding of wild mammals, which was endorsed by the Ad hoc Deer Herd Committee and forwarded to the Council Ordinance Committee. The Council Ordinance Committee met on September 1, 2015, and made changes to the language to also ban feeding wild turkeys and specifically exclude pets, chickens, and ducks. Recommendation and recommended the ordinance be amended, as amended, be forwarded to the full council for consideration. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced this evening, it could be adopted at the next meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce Ordinance 15-10, amending Chapter 606 to include Chapter 606.08, feeding deer, wild turkeys, and other wild mammals. Do I have a motion?
I'll make motion that council take action, introduce the ordinance 15-10, amending Chapter 606, including the section 606.8, feeding of deer, wild turkeys, and other wild mammals.
Second?
Second? I have a motion by Councilman Gustad, a second by Councilman Woodliffe.
Is there any discussion?
I think it answers Mrs. Pascal's question and says, says, "Forbidding provision is not, does not apply naturally growing materials from fruit trees, trees, shrubs, crops, flowers, gardens, producing fruit, vegetables, or household constructions. Bird feeders at least four feet off the ground and vegetation." I don't think we're going to go after your squirrel. Okay? Am I right or wrong? Alright, thank you.
Does someone want to measure bird feeders?
What?
Are they going to measure on bird feeders?
I don't know.
I think the intent of the ordinance was to really look at what impact intentional and purposeful feeding in, of the deer herd and turkeys. And we wanted to keep that separate from people still having the opportunity to feed the birds as they see fit. And I don't think there's necessarily going to be our law enforcement agents out there with a measuring stick. But the intent was to try to minimize the intentful and purposeful feeding and encouragement of the deer to move into the city. So again, I appreciate your comments. I don't think that was the intent by any means to prohibit you from continuing to feed your birds and wanting you to be able to do that, so.
Any other comments? Discussion? Take vote, please.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Mayor Fortham Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Ordinance 15-11, modifying the time periods for the use of consumer fireworks. At the city council work session of September 8, 2015, city attorney George Saylor reviewed the current firework ordinance, which restricts the use of consumer fireworks in the city between the hours of 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM, except on the day before, the day of, and the day after a national holiday, when use is restricted between the hours of 1:00 AM and 8:00 AM. Chapter 663 permits the use of consumer fireworks in the city anytime, except during restricted times. Council does have the authority to prevent the use of fireworks for all days, except for the three-day window around a national holiday if they so choose. Following that discussion, the city attorney was directed to draft an ordinance amendment that would prohibit the use of consumer fireworks, except when state law does not permit the prohibition of expanded, and expanded slightly, the time period consumer fireworks are permitted surrounding the Fourth of July holiday. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced this evening, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce Ordinance 15-11, amending Chapter 663, fireworks, modifying the time period for which the use of consumer fireworks is prohibited. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to amend Ordinance 15-11, amending Chapter 663, fireworks modified, modifying the time periods for the use of consumer fireworks.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilman Woodliffe, a second by Councilman Cody. Is there discussion or comments?
Can you give me some clarification there, Mr. Shiller?
Sure. The proposed amendment, the most significant change is the proposed amendment will not permit the use of fireworks at all, except during those three-day windows around the national holiday. The exception to that is that the Fourth of July was going to be expanded to be five-day, actually 11 days, five days before the day of, and five days after the Fourth of July. So it's a pretty significant change from what we have now. That's the, that's the change. Right now, the only prohibition on use of consumer fireworks, other than around the national holiday, is not between the hours of 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM. Change would eliminate the use of consumer fireworks completely, except during those windows around the national holiday.
The current ordinance allows fireworks to be discharged anytime except during a restricted hour, it's any day.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Take a vote, please.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad?
No.
Councilmember Cody?
No.
Councilmember Zalinski?
No.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Nope.
Mayor Fortham Smith?
No.
Motion failed.
Consideration of a partial split and combination for Miller slash Hutton. At their meeting of September 3, 2015, the planning commission reviewed, took action to recommend a request from James and Anna Miller, and David and Cynthia Hutton for a partial split and combination. The Millers own the home at 250 Fremont Street, parcel 51-274-708-01, in which to split the west eight feet of their parcel, which will then be combined with the Hutton's property at 277 Second Avenue, parcel 51-274-708-03. At this time, council could take action to approve the request from James and Anna Miller, and David and Cynthia Hutton for a partial split and combination that would split the west eight feet from parcel 51-274-708-01, and combine it with parcel 51-274-708-03.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Goodspeed, a second by Councilman Cody. Is there any further discussion?
Just quickly, for public opinion and for the benefit of the, of the people that are showing up tonight, that parcel split does not affect any setbacks, it's still compliant with all the zoning and ordinance that are in that end zone, right?
Both allowed to comply with all zoning and reordnance.
Thank you.
It was passed unanimously by the planning commission.
The neighbors working with each other. That's all it is.
So it should be.
Yep. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Fortham Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
And Councilmember Woodliffe?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of amendment to the interim city manager's employment agreement.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, use, give, C.
E.
E. Another part, another part. Is there another part?
Yeah, the next page.
Okay. Okay. At their meeting of September 3, 2015, the planning commission reviewed and took action to recommend a request from Carl and Christine McKee, and Thomas and Cynthia Tomaszewski for a partial split and combination. The McKees own the home at 433 Elm Street, parcel 51-340-717-01, in which to split the east six, 60 feet of their parcel, which will then be combined with the Tomaszewski's property at 486 Bryant Avenue, parcel 51-304-717-07. At this time, council could take action to approve the request from Carl and Christine McKee, and Thomas and Galen Tomaszewski for the partial split and combination that would split the east 60 feet of parcel 51-340-717-01, and combine it with parcel 51-340-717-07.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Goodspeed, a second by Councilman Zalinski. Is there any discussion? The planning commission? The planning commission again unanimously voted to approve this split, so.
Okay. Take a vote, please.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Fortham Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of amending the interim city manager's employment agreement. Interim city manager Ben Baphos has agreed to serve in that capacity for approximately six months while the city searched for a new city manager. The city has experienced delays in that search, and Baphos desires an amendment to the employment agreement. Baphos has proposed that the current salary of $97,611 be converted to an equally hourly rate of $46.93, and that future time work be paid at that hourly rate. Vacation would be prorated to an hourly basis, calculated at an annualized rate of five weeks per year. This will result in .96 days of vacation per 80 hours worked. The pension contribution would be at the same rate, but paid on a per-hour work basis, rather than being based on the annualized salary. Baphos has also requested council permission to take two to three weeks of unpaid vacation in late September, October of this year. Baphos expects to work three to four days per week, and to establish regular office hours. He would also be available for meetings during the entire work week. There would be no other changes to the employment agreement. At this time, council could take action to amend the employment agreement with Baphos consistent with the above, and force continued service as the interim city manager.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilman Cody, a second by Councilman Goodspeed. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you to Ben and your wife for allowing you to continue to help us on, and we really appreciate that. It's been a tough time, and you've been helping to help us shepherd through some important issues that we faced, and we appreciate you being able to stick around for a little longer.
Any other comments? Vote, please.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Yes.
Mayor Fortham Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We have the amended item. Consideration of the next steps in the city manager's search. On Thursday, September 10, 2015, the city council personnel committee met to consider the city manager's recruitment process. Also attending that meeting were three other council members. The consensus following that meeting is summarized as follows. If Mr. Ryan Heiss is still available, make a conditional offer of employment. Mr. Heiss is not available. If Mr. Heiss is not available, consider a second interview with Mr. Tim Wolf. Also consider a first interview with candidate number 19, and number 32, and Mr. David Bachman, Manistee Public Safety Director. Also consider simultaneous re-advertising the position. Mr. Wolf, candidate number 19, and candidate number 32, and Mr. David Bachman are all interested and available for interviews. Ms. Kathy Grinzinger, I have from the Michigan Municipal League, and Mr. Ben Baphos, interim city manager, are not available from September 21 through October 2, 2015. The suggested interview dates are either Monday or Tuesday, October 5 or 6, 2015. The suggested interview date schedule is as follows. Between 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM, one, two, or even three council members conduct a second, less formal interview with Mr. Wolf. That same afternoon, schedule an interview for the other three candidates. Consider taking action on that same afternoon or early evening. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Cody, a second by Councilman Woodliffe. Is there any discussion?
I'd also encourage the reposting of that on the MML website as a consideration, but I'd like to see that happen as a part of this strategy moving forward, and make sure we are exploring all options if we can.
That was included in the recommended motion. I'm not sure if it's included in the motion. You asked me.
I believe that was with a cutoff date of 9 October?
Correct. Look, there's, you missed the backside of this.
Okay. Because of the proposed interview date, three weeks away, city council could take action to re-advertise with the statement open until filled with resumes required not later than October 9, 2015.
Good comment I would make on that strategy is that I have some work scheduling conflicts on that Tuesday that'll limit my ability to participate, but I have full confidence in the council to move forward without my input. I do have availability on Monday, but not necessarily all day on Tuesday, so.
And you should discuss the date, so if Monday, the 5th, works for the other council members, we can go ahead and schedule on that basis.
Okay.
That's a question, I guess.
It's, that's good for me.
Good for me.
Good for me.
I don't know if I can get out of work. So it's the same Monday or Tuesday? Yeah, I mean, I'll have to, I'll have to talk. So, does the motion reflect October 5 for the interview schedule?
Let's say as a consensus, that's the most logical date. Without Mayor Kenny's, I don't know if she gave any of your feedback electronically or?
Not specific to those dates. She indicated she would be gone for part of, the latter part of September, but expect it back by then.
So do I amend the motion to reflect October 5?
If you would.
Okay, so I'd like to amend the motion to reflect October 5, Monday, October 5, 2015, for interviews for the candidates.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion to amend by Councilman Woodliffe, a second by Councilman Good, Cody. Is there any further discussion?
Take a vote, please.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad?
Yes.
And Mayor Fortham Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Notice, those communications and announcements, I have a report from the Manistee County Community Foundation, Department of Public Works, Parks, Tree Commission. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Ms. Laura Huntsman will report on the activities of the Manistee County Community Foundation and respond to any questions the council may have.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. I'm looking forward to providing just a brief background about the community foundation, but primarily an update about our activities this past year. Community foundations are just as the name implies. They are representing a community, so a group of people that are connected, not only by their geography, but by the way they interact with each other. So the places that we live, the places we work, the things that we do together. And they're meant to provide a foundation or a platform for growth. Across the country, they're, the Manistee County Community Foundation is one of over 1,000 community foundations that collectively hold over $71 billion in community assets in support of the goods of their communities. In Michigan, we're one of 103 that collectively hold $3 billion in community assets. And community foundations are the fastest-growing part of the nonprofit sector. Our mission is to ensure quality of life and place in Manistee County today and for future generations. And we do that by engaging, facilitating, and maximizing the impact of community philanthropy. And really in three primary ways. The first is to provide a place where long-term community capital can be built. Most of our funds are endowment funds, but we also administer funds for short-term needs. We do that through grant-making back out of the community foundation in support of community needs. And third, by serving as a convener around key issues of community leadership. We're governed by a volunteer board of directors. Many of these faces, I'm sure you recognize these names. We are deliberate in wanting to have representation from diverse backgrounds and interests across Manistee County. And one of the really important parts of our board makeup is our representation of youth members. We have two members from the Foundation's Youth Advisory Council that serve as voting members of our board. Looking back at 2014, it was a record year for the community foundation. We received approaching a million dollars in gifts and grants, which was up 25% from the year prior, resulting in seven new funds at the community foundation for a total of more than 80. Our total assets grew to over $3 million, which was an increase of 16% from the prior year. And at the same time, we awarded 117 grants back to the community totaling nearly $600,000. So those are grants that are from unrestricted funds that are competitively awarded, but also primarily so grants out of funds that are designated for a particular nonprofit or for a particular community need. And in addition, our scholarship program is growing, and it supports students countywide. Last year, 18 scholarships, awards that totaled $26,800 were awarded. And we're seeing an increase in the type of awards that are renewable, so we're able to provide ongoing sustained sources of support for students as they make their way through their college careers. And our investment return for last year was 5.7%. As I mentioned, we currently administer more than 80 funds in support of the community. They range widely in not only the types of funds, so as I mentioned, on one extreme, are unrestricted funds that are endowments that are there to provide a permanent source of support for the future needs of Manistee County that can't be anticipated today. So having that flexible source of support for the future is critical. But then they range from funds that are set up for particular nonprofits in our community, for our school systems, for higher ed, for our community college that serves this area offshore, and also donor advice funds. You may recognize Bill Sainz's face up there. There's a memorial fund that was established in his name some time ago that supports youth issues in our community. So, not only on purpose, but in the types of funds, they vary widely in support of needs across Manistee County. In 2014, the new funds that were established included the following. The Corrie and Fleet Perpetual Swimming Fund provides a permanent source of support for enhancing programming and use at the Panaquatics. The Korean of Han Humane Society Fund was established by the Manistee County Humane Society using an estate gift that they received from her to provide a lasting fund that would support the long-term plans and expansion of home-rebound animal shelter. The 12th Street Youth Project Fund, as you may be hearing more about, is established to support the construction of a youth center across from the football fields on 12th Street. The Lakes to Land Communities for Collective Action Fund helps move forward a regional planning initiative that was participated by the city of Manistee and over 17 other jurisdictions to help move that effort forward. The Nakama Park The Nakama Parks Township Parks and Recreation Fund, as the name implies, supports improvements to those areas. The Launch Manistee Fund supports a countywide network to enhance education of Manistee County residents from preschool through their careers. And the Dennisup and Onakama Education Fund was established in his memory to support educational improvements at all of those schools. Last year, the grants awarded the foundation helped support community projects. I just included a few highlights here. A grant helped support what led to the reopening or the grand opening of the Iron Works Cafe this summer in Manistee. Helped support the renovation of the Lions Pavilion at the waterfront. Helped support scholarship programs with the Manistee Recreational Association, Manistee Capital Central, the Manistee Area Public Schools, as well as Cass and Academy, and a lot of our different organizations and institutions that we rely on to support our Manistee County residents, such as the library, and of course, the Volk Theater, which continues to breathe the life into downtown Manistee and provides a fun, enjoyable way to do so. Funds specific to the city include the Manistee Veterans Memorial Park Fund. Since it has been established, more than fifty thousand dollars has been granted back to the city in support of improvements at this park, including this past year, the memorials that were established in support of the USS Liberty. The Manistee Non-Motorized Trail Park Fund supports originally the construction of the park on the city's property east of Manistee, and last year helped support some of the snow trail grooming to allow the use over the winter months. The Ramsdale Theater Preservation Fund was established as an endowment specifically to provide ongoing support for the ongoing restoration and maintenance of the interior of the complex. And new this past year was the establishment of the Ramsdale Theater Community and Arts Center Fund, which is a fund that provides support for the immediate needs of the theater. And this past year, eleven thousand dollars was received to that fund that helped to support the development of the sustainable business model process that you all know is underway currently. The Volk Theater Annual Fund, just looking at the Manistee community in general, helps to support their low-cost services, many that are free to our community and to our school groups, as well as their ongoing operations. I think I mentioned the school funds already, but they're an important part of supporting our students and families. And recently, you may have heard of the establishment of a campaign fund in support of the Manistee Area Public Schools and community project that is planned, and their goal to have the new track constructed next year. The Youth Advisory Council is a group of high school students from each of the county's six school districts that's convened by the community foundation. And they serve as our local group of experts that advise us on the needs and issues that face our county's youth. They also serve as the advisory body that recommends grants out of the youth endowment fund. And this past year, they supported MRA through scholarships to support participation for a student. Their staircase youth services for their summer enrichment program for adolescent youth, and Launch Manistee specifically to help high school students explore post-secondary options, whether it be certificate program or degree program in their future. Launch Manistee is housed at the community foundation. We provide the fiscal and administrative management in support of that program, but it is led by program coordinator Marion Vane, assistant Leo Auckland, and a leadership team that provides ongoing strategic advice and direction to that group. Launch Manistee, as I've said before, supports students from early childhood through careers. And the primary goals that they're working towards right now are to, one, make sure that students that are three and four years old have access to a range of quality preschool options regardless of the family's ability to pay. And the second goal is to increase our current post-secondary attainment rate, which is currently under thirty percent of our Manistee County residents have a associate's degree or higher. And they're working to increase that percentage to sixty percent by the year twenty twenty-five to have a associate's degree or higher or other post-secondary credential. And the reason that they're working towards that specific goal is due to predictions, employment data that is being worked on a national level, and that's what they believe people will need to have, that sixty percent of jobs will require those credentials by that year. So we're pleased to be able to serve in that role and support that really important program for community. With that, that's all that I have in terms of update here this evening. Just wanted to open it up and ask if there are any questions about the community foundation or committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Laura.
At this time, Mr. Jeff McCullough will report on the activities of Public Works Department, Parks Department, and Tree Commission, and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities.
When we talk about public works, I think it's important to understand all the different areas that the public works is responsible for. In Manistee, the public works operates the city utilities, is responsible for fleet maintenance, manages and administers the park system, is responsible for refuse within the city, as well as the entire street network. Within the street department, the city maintains or completes all the winter maintenance, which includes plowing snow, hauling snow, removal of town, sanding, sowing, and making sure that the roadways in the city and parking lots are safe. We also complete maintenance throughout the rest of the year, including leaf removal, street sweeping, crack sealing. We administer road maintenance and upgrade projects. We also are responsible for over seventy miles of sidewalks. And in the past two years, we've made some improvements on how we're dealing with sidewalks, including the new technology for removing trip hazards by cutting, slope cutting those sidewalks. And then we're also doing a lot of concrete work in-house with our staff. In addition, we're responsible for all the forestry work within the city's right-of-way parks and city property. And that includes removing damaged limbs, storm damage. But it also, particularly this year, we've trimmed over thirty trees, and we have fifty trees on our list that have been approved to be completely removed. And we do almost all of that work in-house. We also have contracts with the Michigan Department of Transportation to have three union employees operate the Memorial Bridge, and then also have a contract to maintain US-31 throughout the city limits. In fleet maintenance, we maintain over fifty-five vehicles and pieces of equipment, which is not all of our equipment. There are some pieces, some items on the police cars, fire trucks, or specialized equipment that we need to farm out, but most of that maintenance occurs within our staff. And we also are assisted with the mortar pool management purchasing policies, and have been working the last couple of years to update the longevity and the replacement items for some of our fleet. In the Parks Department, we're responsible for maintaining over eighteen city parks. We do all the mowing, maintenance, repairs, upgrades. We clean seven restrooms between Memorial Day and Labor Day, seven days a week. There are also three other restrooms that get cleaned through contracted operations, such as First Street and Fifth Avenue Beach concessions, as well as the fish cleaning station. I would like to step front of this just a second and apologize to the public that the restrooms at Fifth Avenue Beach were not maintained well over the Labor Day weekend, and the concession air was not, concession stand was not open. That was simply the vendor did not show up for work. We had conversations within two days prior to that, had no indications that he would not be present. We're trying to get ahold of him now, but have not been successful to this point. So we'll probably need to make some changes moving forward. As you're aware, last winter, we successfully purchased and installed a ice skating rink. I think that was very well used throughout the winter. We're also responsible for beach cleaning and maintenance on the boat launches, and then festival support. I think we're getting close to eighteen, nineteen different festivals that we provide, barricades, picnic tables, trash cans, that sort of thing for. On the refuse side, all the commercial and household waste is contracted out for collection by, the current contract is with Republic Waste. We also administer the recycling program, which we just went through that extensively the last couple of months, which includes the drop off of mixed fiberglass, metal, and plastics. We're in the process right now of getting pricing on the new fencing and signage and so forth for the relocation out of the public works yard. And then we also administer the community's yard waste collection program, which is picking up all the biodegradable bags each week, and then depositing those in our compost yard and managing the compost operation and turning that back into topsoil that's used back in our facilities. In the Utilities Department, in two thousand fourteen, we pumped three point, I'm sorry, three hundred and sixty-seven million gallons of water that is produced through four water wells, active wells, two water towers for pressure and storage, and it's distributed through fifty-three miles of water main. During that same year, we treated three hundred and eighty-nine million gallons of sewage, cleaned it, and disposed of that back into the water system. That is done, obviously, through the wastewater treatment plant, but is assisted by thirteen pump stations and seventy-nine miles of sewer system. So to summarize this, I think it's important to, when we look at the staff in the public works, we've got nine full-time employees in the utilities. We have one full-time mechanic that is responsible for fleet maintenance. We have two full-time employees in the Parks Department, and then we bring on six summer staff. We have two seasonal staff that we've brought on the last two years to assist us with the yard waste collection bags. And we have ten full-time employees in the street department, and we bring on three seasonal employees to operate the Maple Street Bridge. These guys work every day, and they work together. These departments can't function as a standalone department. So we intermingle, we have cross-trained, they do a fantastic job with whatever the challenge and the daily objectives to be met. And I would take any questions at this point on the public works.
I think the guys do a real good job. The question I have is pertaining to water, chloride levels. Well, well, six and seven, all that, they're down extremely. How low are they?
They are less than thirty parts.
Oh, wow.
So they've gone down substantially.
Yeah, from three hundred parts down, that's good.
Yes. So the program of rotating the wells, putting in the variable frequency drives, and also adding well ten has been very successful with our chloride. We just, I just reviewed the report, annual report from West Shore Consulting that has produced four more. So the chloride levels down at the bottom of the aquifer still remain very high. They're migrating to the northeast, northwest, towards Lake Michigan. But the way that we're pumping water on the ground is managing that chloride issue much better, so we're not getting the chlorides into the drinking water.
Not getting the upcoating that you're actually having.
Any thoughts about well seven?
Well, seven, I've been doing some research on that. We've got some money in this current budget year. We are, we have pump tested that several years ago, and we are planning to televise that casing to see if it can be brought back into production. And the intent would be to bring it at a lower level instead of two thousand gallons per minute, maybe in the twelve to fifteen hundred gallons per minute, so we don't bring that chloride issue back into play, but we have more reliability to the system and can rest the rest of the wells a little bit more often.
Good, Jeff.
Have a question?
Sure.
Fifty-five units that you take care of with one mechanic. He must be one busy person.
He's very busy.
Do we have to farm out a lot, or is he, how does he keep up? I mean, it just seems unreal.
Yep, he's a very busy person. He'll pull in help from the rest of the guys as we need it. Most of the stuff that he can handle, we do it in-house. We do have to farm out some of our bigger equipment, like the loaders and stuff, when we have larger issues. And we're also working on some programs where we can move more towards the preventative maintenance side than kind of reactive maintenance as well.
Thank you. I just had a couple of things for you, Jeff. First, thank you for addressing the beaches. That was in the paper today, and thank you for taking that. Second of all, your crews are like ghosts, and I've said this before, that the work is done, and really nobody sees them, but everything is completed. The last thing is the trees, you said about fifty trees have to come down over the next period of time. Is there a way I could give a spreadsheet of that?
Of where they're at?
Yes.
Yeah, we could compile something.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Have we hired a new wastewater boy?
We have a deputy, the public works deputy director for utilities began employment yesterday. So I'll bring him to you as your next council meeting and introduce him. I wanted to give us a feel a little bit of that first.
So to speak.
So to speak.
Yeah, just like to thank you and the team for a great job. It was a successful summer, and a lot of great comments about condition of the beach, the beach houses, and continue to do what the guys are doing.
Okay, and then just a quick summary on the, I'm sorry, did you have?
While we're talking about trees, do we have a contract for someone for trees? I was contacted by a citizen who was concerned that they'd been promised replacement trees from the storm in two thousand eight, and those have not yet been taken care of.
We have had substantial challenges with our tree planting program the last three years. Three years ago, or two and a half years ago, we bid that out, had a contractor in place. They chose, they recommended not planting that fall, but waiting till spring. So we informed everybody that had paid for a new tree and waited till spring, called in a mist dig, staked all the trees out. Everything was set to go, and then the contractor disappeared, and we've never heard from him since. So we have bid that out again. We bid that out last year in the fall. We did not receive any bids. We have it off our bids again right now. Michelle tells me we at least have one in already, and we're contracting, contacting the local landscaping companies to try to solicit some interest. One of the things that we discussed at the Tree Commission, which is a good lead-in, was why aren't contractors bidding on it? And one of the members of the Tree Commission is part of that industry, and he suggested that we had a one-year warranty that was required of the contractors. So they plant the tree, citizens have to water it, but if the citizens don't water it and the tree dies, then the contractor has to come back, pull it out, and replace it at his dime. And it was suggested that that was putting too much risk on the contractors, and so we removed that this time around, and are going to do it without a warranty and make adjustments to the program as we need to.
Thank you. I think another issue was, a citizen was concerned about their view being obstructed by trees growing. What sort of policy do we have in that regard?
The Tree Commission will look at any trimming requests, but as a rule of thumb, we do not trim for anybody's view. If they are late-front and actually pay to purchase the view, then they can control it themselves. But particularly for people overlooking park property, the underlying value has been in the trees rather than in an upland neighbor's view.
Okay, thank you.
So just a brief overview of the Tree Commission. It consists of Pat Sagala, who's the longstanding chair, Bruce Shaw, who is actually in the tree industry, Suver Heek, Kathleen Frederick. Suver Heek, Kathleen Frederick, Friedrich, Janice Waterman, Bob Johnson, Pat Williams, and then Kathy Boyle and myself act as liaisons to that, that group. They meet on a monthly basis if, if it is necessary. We bring to them all of the tree removal and trimming requests that are on city property or within the right-of-ways. They have formed kind of a committee that'll go out and review each of those and make recommendations back. And then that's how we act on each of those requests. As I mentioned, there's over fifty trees that will be cut this year. That's a pretty typical year. It seems like a lot of trees, but you drive around this community and we're blessed with our forestry. So, and we need to keep, keep going with our replanning program. And then they also do some work in sponsoring some activities for the Forest Festival as well. Any questions?
What happens to the extra wood that you have, Jeff, and once you've cut these trees down?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that. The, the first step that we do when we're cutting down the trees, we will ask the resident if they would like the wood or an adjacent resident. So we'll start with that resident and we'll kind of ask people that are bringing the vicinity. Anybody in the community that would like wood. We also keep a list of, of people that are interested in wood. So when you're on that list, we will deliver that wood to you or you're welcome to pick it up if you bring a trailer. And then we just simply roll down that list and then go back to the top again. So none of it goes to waste.
I think perhaps to clarify that, the reason we offer it to neighbors and truck it to them is because we have to truck it someplace that wouldn't go out to the compost area, which is farther than any neighbors. So it's actually cheaper for us to do that and take it up to compost area.
Kind of on the same lines, we also, I've had a lot of questions recently about this. We maintain a list of Christmas trees that the community is willing to donate for the Slave Bell Festival. So we keep a list of those throughout the year. And then in the fall, early November, we have staff that go out and look at the trees for size, shape, but then even more importantly, the safety of being able to harvest those. So if there's any residents that have an interest in donating a tree for the Slave Bell Festival or even this summer during the Fourth of July parade, the Forest Service uses one of the trees from that list to put in the parade. So we encourage them to call the Public Works Department to be added to that list.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Concerns and comments, citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be read publicly. Are there any citizens that would like to comment?
Yes. Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Kit Holmes. This is my partner Cynthia Malanzie. We are the new owners of the former Reedmore Bookstore. And we just wanted to, we're in town for a couple of weeks. We just wanted to say hello and meet all of you and just give you a general overview of what we have in mind for the building. This, within the next couple of weeks, we have some, we've had brown paper over the windows as, as construction and deconstruction has begun. Within the next week, with the permits that we've had, the Amor Sign Company will be filling those windows with new information, contact information, and what we have coming on. They're very stylish and I think they'll complement the area and historic district. And what we have in plan, planned for the building is on the top floor will be vacation rental condos. On the main floor will be what we call a listening room or a music venue, where you just, the music is the focus. Also probably do poetry and it'd be rehearsal space, performance space, meeting space for anybody that wants it. And a portion of the basement will eventually become a recording studio. So there will be all of those things in-house facility that somebody might want to stay and play and create in Manistee. And I am a Michigan native originally. We were both in Austin, Texas at this time. And after a long absence from living here, we're looking forward to re-establishing, being a part of this community and enjoying the lake shore in the summer and year-round. So we just wanted to say hello, thank you for your support, and we look forward to working with all of you in the future.
Welcome to the community. Are there any other citizens that would like to make comments? Officials in staff?
Nothing, Your Honor.
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 Council members?
Nothing, Your Honor.
I see the cement going in for the flags. Good job.
Yes, the foundations were reported today for the Six Flags that'll be in the roundabout commemorating the services, the military services, and then also the foundation for the American flag just east of the Lions Pavilion was reported today. It's planned to have the poles actually set on Thursday. And there is a community celebration for the flag raising on Saturday at, I believe it's Saturday. Saturday at.
Thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Just a reminder, Hobbs and Props this weekend, the flag ceremony this weekend. And I want to welcome our two new residents to downtown. We're glad to have you. It's great to see new and exciting things that have come downtown that we haven't seen in a while. So it's, it's great to have that. And thank you to Laura and Jeff and the team for the work they do.
I'd like to thank Chief Ockman in Public Safety for the apprehension of some burglars and, and some quick response. But I think that's great, that some of the investigations and some of the related citizens have helped out there. But that's progress. People feel a little safer. But I'd also like to thank Public Works. It's been a good season. We had a glitch that came up over the, the holiday. But I think all of our visitors were pretty satisfied. I've heard good comments about our people, about souls, our hearts, and everything. It takes a lot of work to make all those things happen.